Oh, they'll be coming. Are you coming to the Halloween dance? All right, all right. I was just over at the church checking things out and planning everything.
Chuck, are you good?
Yeah, it was so weird when I was looking at those.
Ryan, are you good back there?
See, that goes away. Nobody looks at that.
I'm good. I'm not gonna fall.
Nobody looks at this. Oh, the fighter pilot.
Put him there, yeah, yeah.
Instead of the police.
Good evening and welcome to the October 21st meeting of the Roseland Governing Body. Adequate notices meeting provided in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act and at the date, time and location of the meeting were included in the annual meeting schedule. Post on the public bulletin board in the municipal building filed in the office of the Borough Clerk. For those attending tonight's meeting via Zoom, the agenda and any other relevant documents can be found on the Borough's website attached to the meeting notice posted in the news and announcement section. During the meeting, announcement made prior to the two public comment periods. Anyone wishing to make a public comment via computer will be instructed to use the raise your hand icon. And anyone wishing to make a public comment via telephone will be instructed to dial star nine at the appropriate time. For those in attendance in person or remotely, please provide your name and address when selected. If you are eligible for Daniel's Law, please just announce your name. Mr. Watkins, please call the roll.
Mayor Spango.
Present.
Mr. Barty.
Here.
Mr. Barat.
Here.
Mrs. Barati.
Here.
Mr. Schroeder.
Here.
Mrs. Toley.
Here.
Mr. Trillo.
Please rise to the flag salute.
Flag allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
We have a lot of presentations this evening, so I'm gonna move a few things around to try to clear the room. So each person who's being honored or sworn in gets their family members to see them. First, we are going to do a present- proclamation for Kate Frida. Kate, if you could come up with your coach and your dad, please. I didn't even see you there. Come up, dude. On your- So we have Kate here. Kate is a very, very good basketball player. Definitely is not, is on the maternal side, not the dad's side, that's for sure. But Kate plays on a team called the Jersey Aces. And they went out to, where was the competition, Kate?
Orlando.
Orlando. And you didn't just win a championship, you won a Pullman National Championship. Her and her team. I asked her what position she played. She said shooter. So I guess that means she's just really good shooter. But we wanted to bring Kate here today with her coach and explain that they're a national champion from the competitive branch of the prestigious NXT Pro Circuit against teams across the country. Missouri, Oregon, Texas, Florida, New Jersey, and New York. Leave anybody out? You just beat them all, right? They competed in tournaments throughout the country, Pennsylvania, Georgia, facing against a whole number of teams around the nation. And they won the national championships in Orlando, Florida, which is kind of historic for someone from Roseland to win a national championship. So we want to congratulate you. We want to make sure we recognize you. Does Coach want to say anything? Because if not, Dad is.
I should be very proud of this young lady. She's the reason the whole team started in the first place. So clap it off for Kate.
When do I not say something? I wanna, I wanna thank Coach Ty. This, this, this was a long endeavor. It was a lot of work. It was a couple of years in the making. The team that got put together is from girls, local, Millburn, Fairfield, a couple others from the area. I don't remember what the towns were. But they worked really hard. Coach Ty pushes them a lot. It's a great program. These girls, I think they were a little shell shocked when they went to the first tournament. And we were going all over the place, but they put on a great showing. And Kate did a great job, especially in the third quarter of the championship game. So just big congratulations to Kate and the, and the Aces for, and all the girls on how well they did for this tournament.
Who's back there, Ryan or Neil?
I think both.
Okay, next we are going to do, let's do the honorary mayor next. We're gonna do the children's and then we'll swear the police in. Chris, come on up. Well, wait. That's why we'll shuffle. Yeah, of course. No, it's not the Tamimi side. Let's do the- All right, we're gonna switch. We're gonna do the overall winners of the Junior Olympics. We're gonna call you up. You're gonna take your trophy and you'll stand in front of here for a picture. These are the overall winners for their, for their respective age group or grade. Girls kindergarten, Liviana Spolino. Not the maternal side. First and second grade, Charlotte Fobert Singletary. And Danielle Yells-Detroya. Third and fourth grade, Summer Bach.
Yay, Summer.
Boys kindergarten, Siddharth Musti and Mustafa Shan. Boys first and second grade, the president of SCRAM, Leo Masler. He was elected the president of SCRAM. Boys third and fourth, Vihana Kauri. And boys fifth and sixth, Kyle Grabowski. Boys and girls, if you just take a couple steps that way, so you're like center of the field. Chris, do you want to come down with your niece?
Yeah.
Go stand with her. I'll switch with you for once.
You're gonna go in again? All those cameras, it's like Hollywood.
Just a little bit more. Where'd you go? From together, from together, from together? Good. Chris, can you come to this side?
Yeah.
All right, everybody right here with me? Everybody right here? Good, everybody behind me.
Oh, he just came in.
You got one more? Mr. Mayor. Mr. Robot.
Do a mulligan.
Give him his trophy.
Try again, that was our practice. All right, everybody right here. Hey, bro.
I need hand breaks.
Thank you.
Bye. I need hand breaks.
Did you go down on the shore for-
Yeah, but it was, we did, but it was, what do you call it? So we just like, we didn't even stack.
Really?
Yeah. We just, we went for the deck.
At least you could go downs. It's not that far.
We just kinda cleaned up.
Did you have to take a step in from outside?
Yeah, a couple little things. Not much, just, just because it was, that storm was coming, not in no reason.
Good. Okay. Next, we're gonna swear in the 2025-2026 honorary mayor. Christopher Stefanakis. Did I get it right? Tamimi would've been right. I want, Chris, come up here. Mom and Dad also.
There you go.
You can play adult kickball for all the injuries you have. Mom's gonna hold the bible.
Lucky word. We need it. We need that.
Repeat after me. I state your name.
You have to say it loud. Say "I, Christopher Stefanakis."
I, Christopher Stefanakis.
Do solemnly swear. Do solemnly swear that I will-
That I will.
Support-
Support.
The Constitution-
The Constitution.
Of the United States-
Of the United States.
And the Constitution-
And the Constitution.
Of the state of New Jersey-
Of the state of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith-
And I will bear true faith.
And allegiance-
And allegiance.
To the same-
To the same.
And to the governments-
And to the governments.
Established-
Established.
In the United States-
The United States.
And in this state-
And this state.
Under the authority-
Under the authority.
Of the people.
Of the people.
And I state your name-
And I, Christopher Stefanakis.
Do further-
Do further.
Solemnly swear-
Solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully-
That I will faithfully.
Impartially-
Impartially.
And justly perform-
And justly perform.
All the duties-
All the duties.
Of the office-
Of the office.
Of honorary mayor-
Of honorary mayor.
According to the best-
According to the best.
Of my ability-
Of my ability.
And that I will not-
And that I will not.
Use my office-
Use my office.
To grant-
To grant.
Preferential treatment-
Preferential treatment.
Nor to seek-
Nor to seek.
Personal gain-
Personal gain.
Favor or advantage-
Favor or advantage.
Not available-
Not available.
To the general public-
To the general public.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Turn this way. You have to sign yourself. And look up at him while you're signing.
Right here? Go ahead.
Right there.
Right there.
Sign, so keep signing. I'm gonna take another picture.
When do you get the cast on?
Four weeks. I just got it on extra.
Heal fast.
He's young. He'll heal quick.
We'll be in touch.
He doesn't step.
Yes.
Can he get a vote tonight?
Yes, only, only with the tie.
We should make one. We should make one.
Boosting your child.
Oh, yeah.
We actually can't make a tie.
Chris, I'll send your, Chris. No, no, we have to-
I could abstain.
There you go. We now have a tie.
All right. Tom, I'm gonna do the police first because I figured you'd enjoy that. And then do the Constitution. I'm gonna do the police swearing ins first and then do your fair, okay?
Where's the tie?
I don't know. Gonna get their families.
Before, before we do the swearing in, we have one matter of business for the, for the council. Resolution 362-2025 and 363-2025. Need a motion to approve to appoint two new police officers. Do we have a motion?
Some motion.
Second.
Priority totally. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Hearing and seeing none. Where's Kevin? Family?
Mother, grandfather.
Mom and Grandma? We're gonna go, we're gonna go over here. Sorry, sorry, go over here, come on.
I state your name.
I, Kevin Goudy.
Do solemnly swear-
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution-
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States-
Of the United States.
And the Constitution-
And the Constitution.
Of the state of New Jersey-
Of the state of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith-
And I will bear true faith.
And allegiance-
And allegiance.
To the same-
To the same.
And to the governments established-
And to the governments established.
In the United States-
In the United States.
And in this state-
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And I state your name-
And I, Kevin Goudy.
Do further solemnly swear-
Do further solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully-
That I will faithfully.
Impartially-
Impartially.
And justly perform-
And justly perform.
All the duties-
All the duties.
Of police officer-
Of police officer.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
And that I will not use my office-
And I will not use my office.
To grant preferential treatment-
To grant preferential treatment.
Nor to seek personal gain-
Nor to seek personal gain.
Favor or advantage-
Favor or advantage.
Not available-
Not available.
To the general public-
To the general public.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Pin a badge on it?
Kevin, Kevin.
Have to sign.
No uniform.
No.
No uniform.
You know what happened?
Sign.
Thank you. Congrats. If Brandon Torres could come up, please? Family?
I state your name.
I, Brandon Torres.
Do solemnly swear-
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution-
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States-
Of the United States.
And the Constitution-
And the Constitution.
Of the state of New Jersey-
Of the state of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith-
And that I will bear true faith.
And allegiance-
And allegiance.
To the same-
To the same.
And to the governments-
And to the governments.
Established-
Established.
In the United States-
In the United States.
And in this state-
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And I state your name-
And I, Brandon Torres.
Do further solemnly swear-
Do further solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully-
That I will faithfully.
Impartially-
Impartially.
And justly perform-
And justly perform.
All the duties-
All the duties.
Of police officer-
Of police officer.
According to the best of my ability-
According to the best of my ability.
And that I will not use my office-
And that I will not use my office.
To grant preferential treatment-
To grant preferential treatment.
Nor to seek personal gain-
Nor to seek personal gain.
Favor or advantage-
Favor or advantage.
Not available-
Not available.
To the general public.
To the general public.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Brandon.
Thank you.
Congrats.
Oh, my God. Phil's gonna talk to it.
We're getting Anthony for a picture with the rest of the police. To the families of the police officers, we thank you for sharing them with us. And I say this every time we have a new officer get hired. Here it comes. The support that you're gonna offer them at home is as important as the support they get here because they take this job home with them. And their mental health is very, very important. They go through a lot of stress. So the support that they get from their, their law enforcement family and the support they get at home from you can make a difference for the 30-year career that these officers have to go through. I want to welcome them to Roseland, wish them the best, and have a safe 30-year career. Somebody else will give you something when you retire 30 years from now. None of us will probably be here. But congratulations and stay safe.
Stay, stay.
All right, we have one more presentation. It's appropriate that we had two new officers be sworn in before our, become our annual recognition of our platinum sponsor of our concert series. He doesn't just sponsor us for our concert series. He's a member of our police foundation. He's there whenever we need him to help out in any way possible. I'd like to call up our friend, Tom O'Byrne. The concert series that we started in 2019 is now, we've probably had close, we've had over 20 concerts. And everything that goes along with those concerts, from the signs that you see up on the boards to, to, to any mailings that go out, is no cost to the taxpayer. And it's attributed to a lot of people, but most importantly, Tom O'Byrne. So all those great things that happened at the summer concert series are all free because of people like Tom. But on a personal note, besides the concert series, the police foundation, all the great work you're doing to help out with the Mayor's Ball, which is supporting the police foundation, the recreation boosters, and historical society, we wouldn't be as cohesive a unit as a community if it wasn't for people like you, Tom. So thank you. Appreciate it. Appreciate your friendship.
Thanks very much. I'd rather be out in the parking lot in July introducing the first concert series. And it's amazing how, how fast time goes by. The, I want to thank Mayor Spango, the Borough Council, Recreation Department for having me serve once again as your platinum sponsor. Want to thank Emergency Management, John Mathias, for the wonderful signboards on Passaic and Eagle Rock Avenues. In the 60 years that I've been around this area in Roseland, I've seen a lot of changes. The industrial buildings that used to be here are now, are now shopping centers and self-storage facilities. The, the train that ran through town is gone. The yard that I used to walk my dog in to look at the trucks is still my yard with trucks, which is good. The ball field, the field where I used to play ball is now an office building. And the office buildings are now becoming townhouses, condominiums, and apartments. And that means that shortly, a lot of people are gonna be moving to Roseland. And these summer concerts, they'll see, these are one of the reasons they'll realize what a great choice they made in doing so. So thank you very much. I'll see you all Friday night at the Mayor's Ball.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you. Yes. Yes, I did. Yes, I talked to his, oh, you did too? So did I.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, first on the agenda, now we have our first round of public comment. Any member of the public wishing to be heard, come forward, state your name and address for the record. If you're with us via Zoom, use the raise your hand icon. And if you're with us telephonically, press star nine.
Ready? Yeah. Oh, I'm just waiting for you to say your name and address. That's all. Janet Tremont, 38, Leonard Terrace, Roseland Glen. For the second time in 10 days and the third time in two months and countless times before that, the no left turn sign at the intersection of Leonard Terrace and Eagle Rock Avenue was knocked down. It has gotten to the point where the county has refused to put the sign back up at that location. Instead, they decided to put it below the stop sign on the right-hand side of the exit. The problem with that is that most people go into the intersection beyond the stop sign and don't see the no left turn. The other part, part of the problem is that now there is absolutely nothing there on the island. And it's a drivable island. And it's very easy for someone making an illegal left to drive over that island. We're looking to do something to prevent that from happening. If they can't put a sign up there, can we have maybe a cement planter of some sort that would discourage people from turning in? The, the, that intersection is designed specifically for right turns only. Right turn in, right turn out. That's the only way you're, you should be able to go. And that's not happening. So my first request, Mayor Spango, is to get something on that island to prevent people from making that left-hand turn. My second request is for better enforcement at that intersection. If we could have traffic enforcement detail, maybe once a shift at a time they're choosing, varying the times day to day for the next 30 days to make sure that there's some sort of enforcement against the left-hand turn. And it's more, it's more people turning into the complex than it is people leaving. We need, we need to call attention to that island and we need to do something to discourage- And we need to do something to discourage the left-hand turns in either direction. And the third thing I'm asking for is for the town to petition Essex County, specifically the Essex County engineer, to take a better look at that intersection. There's something wrong. And we can't keep going through this pattern over and over again. Whether they eliminate the no-left turn or if they recommend maybe making it exit-only, something has got to be done. And really, I think an engineer needs to take a look at it. Maybe Mr. Brant has some suggestions. It's terrible. And it's a safety issue as well. We have at the foot of Leonard Terrace, there are at least half a dozen dog walkers, you know, people with dogs. They're out 7:00, 8:00 o'clock at night. There's not much light down there. That's a problem. That's a concern. And we also have young children who play in that area. So if somebody comes in at a higher rate of speed, there's nothing to slow them down. We need help.
Thank you. I'll definitely send that to Councilman Brant's committee. He is a traffic engineer, so he does have a little bit of heads up. And we will forward the request for the enforcement detail to the Police Department and Councilman Parati through the Police Committee to make sure we share your concerns with them for the enforcement detail. And I'm sure, John, you'll coordinate with the county engineer for that as well.
I was just gonna say, I saw the sign today because I came in from Eagle Rock to use your nice little mailbox.
Yes. Everybody does.
And I'm like, it's gone. But then I saw it on the glass.
Yeah.
But I have a question. Do you think a lot of those people doing those turns are from the complex too?
No, no. The last three that we caught on camera were not residents. One looked like a private passenger car, but I saw it again today. I think it's the same vehicle. And the license plate started with an X. So I think it's maybe like an Amazon delivery person or someone like that. It's really primarily people who are not familiar with the development. We think maybe Amazon trucks sometimes. And there were a couple contractors working in the area who came in and left with dented vehicles. So. Okay. Thank you.
Any other member of the public wishing to be heard, come forward, state your name and address for the record if you're with us.
Evening, Mayor and Council. I've been Greenes, our County Executive. I do have a few announcements, and I'm sure we're excited to hear. Our annual Strutarmunt Costume Contest for Halloween will take place this weekend in Brookdale Park on October 18th. At 9:00 a.m. for registration. We'll be in Grover Cleveland the same day, the 25th, at 1:00 with registrations. In addition, at Turtleback Zoo, we'll have our annual Halloween event on Friday evening. It's $3 admission for zoological members and $5 for general admission. And throughout the facility, we'll have Halloween treats for the children and some entertainment. Not to push all the holidays, Riker Hill opens up for its annual open house on November 1st and 2nd from 11:00 to 5:00 p.m. on Saturday and Sunday. And then to dovetail into the December events, our Holiday Light Show will open up on November 21st at Turtleback Zoo. And our Holiday House Tour will be December 6th and 7th in the County of Essex. I will talk to Sanjeet if you want on that issue. Okay? And we'll convene a meeting if we have to. I mean, at the site.
Appreciate it.
Okay? Anything else, just give me a call.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Before we go on with our agenda, I just wanted to share something concerning the police. Officer Miller, his dad was texting both, I believe, myself and Councilman Parati today. He went in for surgery today, which I'm sure everyone's aware. They did some work with his bladder. The surgery was successful. And I got a text from his father a little while ago that he's out of recovery. He went to recover around 4:00. He came out, I guess about an hour, hour and a half ago. And we just want to send our thoughts and prayers to him and his family and wish him the best. Just wanted to give everyone an update on Officer Miller. First on the agenda, we have Ordinance 38-2025. Mr. Watkins, please read the ordinance by title only.
An ordinance amending Chapter 15 of the Revised General Ordinances of the Borough of Roseland entitled Regulation of Garbage, Trash, and Waste Collections to mandate that yard waste be placed in biodegradable paper bags.
Is there a motion to introduce Ordinance 38-2025?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing and seeing none.
Ordinance number 38-2025 will be posted on the Borough's website. Notice of Public Hearing will be published in the progress. Public hearing will be held on Tuesday, November 25th, 2025.
Next is an introduction of Ordinance 39-2025. The council has an amended ordinance in front of them. Originally, this was only supposed to be for certain areas in town, but now it's town-wide. That's why you have another, an updated copy of the ordinance. That being said, Mr. Watkins, can you please read Ordinance 39-2025 by title only?
Ordinance amending Section 3-2 entitled Noise, prohibiting the use of any type of engine brakes commonly known, commonly referred to as Jake brakes in the Borough of Roseland.
Is there a motion to introduce Ordinance 39-2025?
So moved.
Second.
Barty Brant, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing and seeing none.
Ordinance number 39-2025 will be posted on the Borough's website. Notice of Public Hearing will be published in the progress. Public hearing will be held on Tuesday, November 25th, 2025.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is an introduction of Ordinance 40-2025. Mr. Watkins, please read the ordinance by title only.
Ordinance amending the Roseland Land Development Ordinance, Article 4 entitled Zoning, Section 30-403.8 entitled Fences and Retaining Walls.
Is there a motion to introduce Ordinance 40-2025?
So moved.
Second.
Parati, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing and seeing none.
Ordinance number 40-2025 will be referred to the Planning Board to ensure that amendments proposed herein are not inconsistent with the master plan. The ordinance will be posted on the Borough's website. Notice of Public Hearing will be published in the progress. Public hearing will be held on Tuesday, November 5th, 2025.
25th, right?
What's that?
You said 5th. I think it's 25th, correct?
I can't... Yes.
The 25th, correct? Okay. Thank you. Next on the agenda is a public hearing on Ordinance 33-2025. Mr. Watkins, please read the ordinance by title only.
An ordinance of the Borough of Roseland to repeal Ordinance Number 24-2025 is amended, which provided for salaries and compensation to be paid to non-union employees of the Borough of Roseland and substitute therefore salaries and compensation for the year 2025.
Is there a motion to open the public hearing on Ordinance 33-2025?
So moved.
Second.
Barty Toley, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing and seeing none. Does anyone wish to be heard on Ordinance 33-2025? Hearing and seeing none, may we have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Toley Schroder, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing and seeing none. Mr. Watkins, please read the ordinance by title only.
An ordinance of the Borough of Roseland to repeal Ordinance Number 24-2025 is amended, which provided for salaries and compensation to be paid to non-union employees of the Borough of Roseland and substitute therefore salaries and compensation for the year 2025.
Is there a motion to adopt Ordinance 33-2025?
So moved.
Second.
Barty Toley, roll call vote, please, Mr. Watkins.
Mr. Barty?
Yes.
Mr. Brant?
Yes.
Mrs. Parati?
Yes.
Mr. Schroder?
Yes.
Mrs. Toley?
Yes.
Ordinance 33-2025 will be advertised in the progress as a past ordinance, shall take effect as provided by law.
Thank you, Mr. Watkins. Next on the agenda is public hearing on Ordinance 34-2025. Mr. Watkins, please read the ordinance by title only.
Bond ordinance providing for 2025, 2026 road improvements in and by the Borough of Roseland in the County of Essex, New Jersey, appropriating $620,000 therefore and authorizing the issuance of $589,000 bonds or notes of the Borough to finance part of the cost thereof.
Is there a motion to open the public hearing on Ordinance 34-2025?
Motion.
Second.
Toley Schroder, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing and seeing none. Does anyone wish to be heard on Ordinance 34-2025? Hearing and seeing none, may we have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Brant, Barty, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing and seeing none. Mr. Watkins, please read the ordinance by title only.
Bond ordinance providing for 2025, 2026 road improvements in and by the Borough of Roseland in the County of Essex, New Jersey, appropriating $620,000 therefore and authorizing the issuance of $589,000 bonds or notes of the Borough to finance part of the cost thereof.
Is there a motion to adopt Ordinance 34-2025?
So moved.
Second.
Brant, Toley, roll call vote, please, Mr. Watkins.
Mr. Barty?
Yes.
Mr. Brant?
Yes.
Mrs. Parati?
Yes.
Mr. Schroder?
Yes.
Mrs. Toley?
Yes.
Ordinance 34-2025 will be advertised in the progress as a past ordinance, shall take effect 20 days after the first publication after final adoption as provided by law.
Thank you, Mr. Watkins. Next on the agenda is a public hearing on Ordinance 35-2025. Mr. Watkins, please read the ordinance by title only.
An ordinance amending Section 14-4 of the Revised General Ordinances of the Borough of Roseland entitled Use of Outdoor Facilities to Amend Fees for the Tier 1 Nonprofit Athletic Groups.
Is there a motion to open the public hearing on Ordinance 35-2025?
Motion. Second.
Toley, Parati, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing and seeing none. Does anyone wish to be heard on Ordinance 35-2025? Hearing and seeing none, may we have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Toley, Barty, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing and seeing none. Mr. Watkins, please read the ordinance by title only.
An ordinance amending Section 14-4 of the Revised General Ordinances of the Borough of Roseland entitled Use of Outdoor Facilities to Amend Fees for Tier 1 Nonprofit Athletic Groups.
Do we have a motion to adopt Ordinance 35-2025?
So moved.
Second.
Barty, Toley, roll call vote, please, Mr. Watkins.
Mr. Barty?
Yes.
Mr. Brant?
Yes.
Mrs. Parati?
Yes.
Mr. Schroder?
Yes.
Mrs. Toley?
Yes.
Ordinance 35-2025 will be advertised in the progress as a past ordinance, shall take effect as provided by law.
Thank you, Mr. Watkins. Next on the agenda is a public hearing on Ordinance 36-2025. Mr. Watkins, please read the ordinance by title only.
An ordinance amending Section 2-53 of the Revised General Ordinances of the Borough of Roseland entitled Municipal Alliance Committee to change the month for the reorganization meeting of the Municipal Youth Guidance Subcommittee from January to July.
Do we have a motion to open the public hearing on Ordinance 36-2025?
So moved.
Second.
Barty, Parati, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing and seeing none. Does anyone wish to be heard on Ordinance 36-2025? Hearing and seeing none, may we have a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion.
Second.
Parati, Brant, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing and seeing none. Mr. Watkins, please read the ordinance by title only.
An ordinance amending Section 2-53 of the Revised General Ordinances of the Borough of Roseland entitled Municipal Alliance Committee to change the month for the reorganization meeting of the Municipal Youth Guidance Subcommittee from January to July.
Do we have a motion to adopt Ordinance 36-2025?
So moved.
Second.
Parati, Barty, roll call vote, please, Mr. Watkins.
Mr. Barty?
Yes.
Mr. Brant?
Yes.
Mrs. Parati?
Yes.
Mr. Schroder?
Yes.
Mrs. Toley?
Yes.
Ordinance 36-2025 will be advertised in the progress as a past ordinance, shall take effect as provided by law.
Thank you, Mr. Watkins. Next on the agenda, we have public hearing on Ordinance 37-2025. Mr. Watkins, please read the ordinance by title only.
An ordinance approving and adopting a redevelopment plan for the property located at 7 Becker Farm Road, also identified as Block 30.01, Lot 13 on the official tax map of the Borough of Roseland.
Do we have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved. Second.
Brant, Barty, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing and seeing none. Does anyone wish to be heard on Ordinance 37-2025?
William Tedesco, 20 acre court. It's really a statement in a sort of a way. You know, I know you people have nothing to do with it. Our legislature's failed us. This is a court-mandated thing. And what the hell does a court have to do with this personally? You know, the town is changing like it's unbelievable. But here's what, I mean, they used to build one-family houses. Now we got these gigantic things. They're gonna ruin everything as far as I'm concerned. And of course, I understand the young kids can't afford these single houses anymore. So that's why they're building... It's all about money. Let's face facts. All right? But my concern is this: water. I don't, you know, I don't know what they're doing here or whatever. You know, we're gonna hear the engineer reports and whatever about water storage or things like that, which I've known. But we have a big flooding problem down the other end of town. We're taking water... I used to live on Martha Road. It got flooded up there. That water's coming all the way down through those little brooks. What are they doing about these brooks? Are they cleaning them or nothing? It's gonna be worse. We're in a drought right now. I know I passed the Jersey City Water Reservoir. It's terrible. It's unbelievable. But let's face it, when it rains real hard, the people down there, Councilman there, it's gonna get worse. I don't care what they tell me, retention ponds they're gonna build and whatever. Well, if they're gonna build one for 1,000, they should make it 3,000, personally, whatever they're doing. You know? I know your backs are against the wall. I'm not blaming you. There's a gun in your head. And that's the way it goes. We can spend money from here to kingdom come, but the judges don't care. You know, as far as that's concerned. But I am very concerned about the water situation. That little brook, when it rains a little bit, I watch it go crazy through Becker Farm Road. It's unbelievable. It's going down. And, you know, I see the trees and stuff and the things. It's, you know, I just feel sorry for the other people downtown. They're gonna get it. I'm probably lucky. I'm not. Hopefully. But, you know, I just, it's my statement. I just think this is terrible. I know, you know, there, but, you know, they gotta do something better than this, really. It's, well, it's not only in this town. It's all over. But, you know, I feel sorry for the people on the other end of town. They're gonna get it. That's all I could say. But thanks.
Thank you. Any other member of the public wishing to be heard on Ordinance 37-2025? Thank you, Neil. Hearing and seeing none, may we have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Barty, Brant, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing and seeing none. Mr. Watkins, please read the ordinance by title only.
An ordinance approving and adopting a redevelopment plan for the property located at 7 Becker Farm Road and also identified as Block 30.01, Lot 13 on the official tax map of the Borough of Roseland.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to adopt Ordinance 37-2025?
So moved. Second.
Barty, Brant, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Barty?
Yes.
Mr. Brant?
Yes.
Mrs. Parati?
Yes.
Mr. Schroder?
Yes.
Mrs. Toley?
Yes.
Ordinance 37-2025 will be advertised in the progress as a past ordinance, shall take effect as provided by law.
Thank you, Mr. Watkins. Next is the approval of bills, Resolution 364-2025, approving the October 15th bill list. Everyone received the bill list? If there are no questions, concerns, comments, or accusations, we'll take a motion to approve the bill list.
Motion.
Second.
Parati, Brant, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing and seeing none. Next is the adoption of resolutions, 1 through 7 by Agenda Items by Resolution Number 365-2025 through 371-2025. Questions, concerns, comments, or accusations on these adoptions, if there are none, we'd like to have a motion.
I have a quick question. Resolution 369-2025, there's, additional money is needed for the roof? Did we do anything different?
The roof. They were only going to patch the roof. But the engineer felt that with replacing the air conditioning unit, if we patched it, we'd have to put another roof on in a couple years. We'd pay the money for the patching and then pay the money for the roof. So they're doing it all at once, which will save us money over the next couple of years.
Okay, good. I didn't know what it was.
We would eventually have to replace that roof. We would eventually have to replace that roof anyway.
Yeah, I was gonna say, that wasn't that to be done anyway?
Yep.
Okay. Good, thank you.
That's the roof just above the-
Correct.
Just right, it's just above.
Both the engineer and superintendent of public works thought it was more economically responsible to do it all now.
So, okay, municipal building. No, it's nothing to do with the library?
No.
No, that's here.
Yeah.
I have a question. Number six, when we no longer have West Orange picking up the dead carcasses and space farms, zoo?
Maureen?
Is that Space Farm Zoo?
Yeah, West Orange is still our animal control, but they don't pick up, um-
The deer.
Deer, so.
And does it still have to be off of your property?
No, we have a private agreement with the company in public.
We upgraded it because people were-
Were pulling-
-dragging deers, then they don't have to drag them, they'll go in the backyard and get them.
Now they don't have to drag it.
All right. And the last one.
Space farm.
Number seven, is this co-op similar to the Mars County one, Maureen? We still buying stuff from the Mars County co-op?
Number seven's under the educational co-op. Number six that you just spoke about was under the Mars County co-op.
Okay. So it's two different ones, sorry.
Any other questions, concerns, comments? If there are none, do we have a motion to move these seven in their entirety?
So moved.
Second.
Barty, Parati, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing and seeing-
Bless you.
Bless you. Hearing and seeing none. Mayor's report, I, I mentioned about Officer Miller. The, we have a lot of stuff coming up this week. I'm gonna thank a lot of the volunteers on Friday night, but all the people that, from the town who put their time together for the mayor's ball, which does not benefit me or anyone else, but it benefits the police foundation, the recreation boosters, and the historical society. The money goes directly back to all the residents. I just want to publicly thank them here at an open meeting. They've put a lot of work in. We started our meetings in the spring. It's come a long way, and we would not be able to do it without that whole group of people, so I want to thank them. And then, I know Councilman Trillo's not here tonight, but we have a trunk or treat on Saturday as well. And then next week, we have Halloween, a free Halloween party behind, at the snack shack. We'll have free food for the public while it lasts, trying to give people an alternative after they trick or treat behind the, the center. Safe place to gather because it is a Friday night, and we're looking forward to all the, all the great things coming up in the next few weeks, and thank everyone for, for their efforts. Committee reports, Finance Administration, Councilman Barty.
Thank you, Mayor. Our Borough Administrator, Maureen Schumacher, submitted our 2025 best practice inventory to the state of New Jersey, and we're proud to report to the hard work of Maureen and the rest of the borough employees that we are receiving 100% of our state aid and never receive no penalties. So, great job, like usual. So, that's all I got.
Thank you, Maureen.
Thank you. Recreation, Councilman Trillo as well. That's Councilman Barty or Councilman Schroder, anything to add?
I just would add, Mr. Mayor, basketball registration's open. Boys and girls basketball.
Thank you.
Looking forward to kicking off that seat.
I'm a hockey guy like you are. I forgot, I'm surprised you didn't. But thank you. Councilman Schroder, your committees?
I have nothing to update on the committee, however, I just want to congratulate again the officers joining the force. For you find, you know, officers and police officers and, you know, just keep an eye on them as you always do, guide them along. Really great to see the force growing, keeping us all safe, and we, we really appreciate that. Want to, want to also thank Tom O'Brien, as you already did, I mean, with a great contribution to the town, as always, whether it's the council series or otherwise. So, so thank you, and just great, great news here about Officer Miller. It's fantastic progress in a real tough time.
Remarkable.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Remarkable, unbelievable. Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Barant, Public Works Engineering.
Good evening. So, leaf collections started in the town on Monday, similar to previous years. We passed an ordinance earlier. That's for yard waste. You're still allowed to put leaves on the street. The, the recyclable paper bags are for yard waste from your lawns, and you put leaves in there during the off season when they're not collecting leaves. So you can still put your leaves out on the street as you normally would for the next couple of weeks. Last night, we had a planning board meeting where 65 Livingston Avenue came before the board and requested an extension for their, for their development. We agreed to grant that extension for one year. They're allowed up to three years of extensions for that. But I, I, I made the point to, to specifically ask them to come before the board in the near future to discuss the sidewalk from their development through Livingston, up Livingston Avenue to the town center, because all the other developments in the area are going in, and those residents won't be able to utilize the center. So, they agreed to come before us at some point. Hopefully, we can reach out to them and have them come before this board. Speaking of sidewalks, the Safe Walking and Cycling Committee is meeting this Thursday. All are welcome to attend and sit in on the meetings, bring things to discussion for the committee to make recommendations to this board. At our last caucus meeting, I brought to the attention of the council the recommendation for the Safe Walking Cycling Committee to install a sidewalk from the town center through the eastern border of town, near the West Orange border. We discussed it. More discussions will take place. But these are the type of things that the SWAC committee is looking for, trying to push forward in this town. So, that is my report today.
Thank you. Public Safety Councilman Parati?
Thank you, Mayor. Congratulations to Kevin, Officer Goody, and Officer Torres as well. I also, we also ordered our pedestrian signs. There's, they should be in, in about four to six weeks. John Mathias had some preliminary work done, so when they come in, they can go right in. I want to discuss, over the past few meetings, there has been some public comments regarding our police department. And recently, when there was a single vehicle accident, someone from the public came and asked for a, a, um, a, oh my gosh, I'm losing my train of thought. Oh, yeah, right. Asked for an investigation. So, when I spoke to the police director, when anything occurs with a police officer in that manner, an internal investigation is all, always done. So we don't have to request one, it's done automatically. Our police department, and it's, we met with our police, our police committee met a couple weeks ago with the, with the police department, and our police department and its leadership, I can confidently say that is in a much better place than it was a few years ago. In 2021, this council partnered with the Ambrose Group to conduct a comprehensive evaluation of our department, which included recommendations for addressing areas in need of improvement. This process typically is done every 10 years, and I think it was done right before Chief McDonough was sworn in. Their review, the Ambrose review highlighted several deficiencies in our department, including outdated attorney general guidelines, outdated and missing SOPs, the lack of body cameras, license plate readers, and limited community engagement with our police officers, with our community. The resulting report was thorough and provided a clear roadmap for progress. I'm proud to share that, that as of today, due to Director Choffey's leadership and the men and women of our police force, every single thing that was outlined in that report has been addressed and corrected. This was truly a team effort from everyone. The, the department has made tremendous progress, and both the, I feel that within the next year or two, I believe the committee feels, that within the next year or two, we will be in a position to, to appoint a chief of police, something that we identified as a key goal from the beginning. When people make comments suggesting that department lacks organization or leadership, it's important to remember that they are not there day to day to see how the department really operates. They often hear only fragments of information. The truth is that in the last two and a half years, the borough has not received any grievances from the police department, and that is a huge change from the past, when the borough faced significant legal costs because of multiple grievances. We've also seen measurable improvements in the morale and performance of our department. Sick time has gone down from 164 callouts in 2022, 2023 to 144 in 2425. That's a 13, 13% decrease. Overcost, overtime costs have dropped as well. 2022, 2023, our overtime totaled $200,000. This year, for 2425, we're about at $30,000, and to be clear, that's less the overtime that was incurred because of Officer Miller's tragic accident. These are real results that speak to strong leadership and a healthier work environment. Our officers are more involved in our community than ever before. In the past, there was little interaction outside their official duties. Today, officers, even those who are off duty or living, and living outside of our town, attend borough events with their families and their children. This builds real connection with our residents. It's a striking and positive change from how things used to be. Here are some other statistics that, I had given preliminary statistics, but the officers did a great job in giving me some real firm numbers. Motor vehicle violations in 2022, 2023 that were issued were 2,183. Total summons issued for 2425 were 3,517. Roseland issued 21, 2,183 summonses for these years. It's a 61% increase in summonses. So while we might not be specifically having speeding, there are motor vehicle violations that are being written, which is keeping our community safe. Our accidents, our accidents. In 2022 and 2023, total was 357. 24 and 25, it was 275. Again, that proves to the fact that more summonses are being written, so our community is be, is safer. Thefts, not including motor vehicles, the same years, there were 55. Currently, 2024, 2025, there's only 25. Total burglaries, this is concluding residential, commercial, and motor vehicles, for 2022, 2023, there were 44. 24, 25, there were 36. This also tells us that our officers are out there patrolling our residents, patrolling our, our residential streets. They're keeping the community safe. So, after all is said and done, I think our officers have done a tremendous job over the past few years. It's, it's great to see these numbers. I'm sure they'll even be better. And I just wanted to say thank you to each and every one of them for everything that they do for us. Oh, the motor vehicle thefts. Sorry, I forgot one. Motor vehicle thefts, 2022, 2023, there were 13. 2024, oh, this was a big one, I forgot. 2024, 2025, there were two. So, I just want everyone to know in the community that we hire new officers, we hire additional officers, and I just want to say thank you. Thank you. Thank you, man.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question to say to the complete, our police officers are here, another issue regarding drivers. Coming home this morning from church around 10 o'clock, and I have a right on Maple, and another right on William. And there was something in the car, I have to pay the number, I'm concerned, too, was just, just on my head. And as I was approaching, the police were, I'm only going 15 miles an hour, this car zoomed right around me, come back to the house, and I don't, I don't make a car, it's kind of an old car, but they do that. I went, this is a rest. I was really pissed, you know, whatever.
The traffic.
Traffic. I, I, I don't know.
Were you doing the speed limit? Because you're supposed to go the speed limit. If you're going too slow-
Don't, 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 don't answer that question.
Go around me at the stop sign. Whatever. He has a schoolhouse house in Ryan. Okay, uh, the other item I have, I know we approved in May the e-bike ordinance, but obviously too many kids, even grownups, driving recklessly with them. From Roseland, St. Anthony, um, in the Hudson Parkway, um, I think, I don't know, parents are getting the ordinance, or they're representing the children, but I think the parents need to get to an e-bike, e-bike, um, school. Okay, enough of that. Today, everybody knows, we shut right open, well, and the students in class, they must have fun taking students there today, on a Wednesday. We're also, they ran with Colewell, as Colewell, themselves Roseland, for funds to get in. That brings me to, um, and the other, only other item I have here is that on October 30th, it's Thursday, the fifth grade Halloween, it's the Halloween dance, Halloween dance for fifth graders, what they're applying to school in Roseland, will be held there for ladies and gentlemen at church from 6:30 until 8 o'clock. It's early that day because the school, next day is Friday on Halloween, we're not gonna have a Halloween interfere with any trickery. So, the night before, they come to, and there will be trophies again for winners. So, that's from 6:30 to 8 o'clock at our ladies' sacrament order. And we're looking forward to that. Thank you. If there are none, next on the agenda are, we've finished from our course, but the exact section that we need. I want to say, I wasn't- The council told, accusing herself, that members of the council received a petition to approve. Second. All in favor? Opposed? Hearing and seeing none. Next, we have our second round of comments. The public wishes to be heard, come forward to the record. If you're with us via Zoom, use the raise your hand icon. Can you, if you could address the issue of speeding tickets and written warnings for speeding? For example, between August 2024 and July 2025, we're totally 36 speeding tickets, and there were a total of 86 speeding warnings. In a town where you had 30,000 cars in an eight-day period going over Lincoln with, with, I think, three speeding tickets and multiple overweight vehicles, why isn't there more emphasis put on speeding? It seems the logical approach, especially when we're talking about sidewalks and whether or not they're dangerous, whether or not we should put up more pedestrian walkways, whether or not we should, or pedestrian crossing signs, or whether or not we should paint more walkways. Why isn't there a focus on speeding? Okay, thank you.
Any other member of the public wish to be heard? Come forward, state your name and address for the record. If you're with us via Zoom, use the raise your hand icon.
Nick Bolamos, 7 Plymouth Place. Two things. First, I'd like to bring up, spoke to a few neighbors over the past couple of weeks, and they were commending the job that Mayor and Council did up here, and how safe they feel with their kids coming up here, somewhere to play, and somewhere to eat. They don't have to worry about them. So, you guys did a great job.
Thank you.
My next question is, approximately how many people live in the town of Roseland?
Last census, 6,200.
How many?
6,200 by the last census.
So, I find it a little odd that out of 6,200, we have one person that is constantly complaining about the police department. In my opinion, there's an agenda here. I'd like to know what that agenda is. Maybe we can ask Ms. Tremont what that agenda is, because everyone I speak to in town is extremely happy with our police department. Excuse me. And I'm, it's starting to really upset a lot of people. And I speak- And it's starting to really upset a lot of people, and I speak to a lot of people in this town. And thank you so much for your report, because I agree with you, the police are doing an amazing job. And honestly, the constant badgering and complaining, it's getting old. It's getting old, and I'd like to know what that agenda is. So maybe, if public commenting is not over, Ms. Tremont can come up here and tell us what that is. Thank you so much.
I have one agenda, and only one agenda, and that's public safety. And I feel that public safety should be the primary concern.
I feel that public safety should be the primary concern of this town. I also feel that we are long overdue for a police chief, we are long overdue for captain. You need to promote somebody, you need to get some organization internally in the police department. You look at Essex Fells, Essex Fells has a department of thirteen people. Not only do they have a chief, they have a captain. We are five years without a chief, three years without a captain, and there's no end in sight. I think we deserve better than that. I've been a twenty-eight-year resident of this town, and I would like to see better performance. That's my agenda.
Ma'am? Thank you for your explanation, I really appreciate that. I've been in this town for over fifty years, and I think, again, I'm gonna reiterate, I think our police department is doing an amazing job. I do have a question from mayor and council. Has anyone ever come up here and had an issue with the past director, captains, lieutenants, or sergeants prior to this administration?
You're speaking, just for clarification, you're speaking about the prior administration?
The prior director, the prior director, the prior captains, the whole rank. Has anyone ever come up here to complain about the job being done in the town of Roseland? Because I'm not aware of it. Is anyone else?
No. But if I may say something?
Please.
Because I've been on the council the longest, and I'm in town forty years. There have been previous grievances years ago, where we lost lawsuits for millions of dollars under previous administrations, and the department.
I'm not talking about the police department lawsuits amongst each other.
But I don't see any now, so.
I'm talking about, I'm talking about a Roseland resident coming up here to complain about everything the police department and the director's doing. That's what my question is. It's a yes or no question.
Not that I recall.
Right. So again, there's obviously an agenda here. There's obviously an agenda, and Ms. Tremont can come up here as many times as she wants, but I think everyone knows what that agenda is. Thank you so much.
Is this a debate? I mean, if we're in a debate, you know, let's get different forums.
Sure, whenever you're ready, I'm there.
Any other member of the public wish to be heard?
Yeah.
William Tedesco, Twenty Maker Court. I've been here sixty-five years in this town, okay? I had an agenda many years ago. It was about medical insurance, okay? Never made anything personal, never brought anybody out from the audience. You have a problem with? I always supported the police department for sixty-five years. There's good and bad in everything. We all make mistakes, all right? But, you know, if a person has her opinion, they should be able, this is what we're here for, to make a personal opinion. I don't knock people. That's, that's me there. I'm gonna give you my opinion, but I never came up here and made it personal since I started approximately, probably twenty oh five or something like that, you know? So, I don't like when it gets personal, personally. And I don't think the police department likes it when it gets personal. I don't think it's a personal thing. I think, we all wanna see better, whether I wanna see, whether it's the police department, public works, or whatever. I've always supported this town, period. And I think everybody tries to do their best. Yes, there's mistakes make it. Who hasn't made a mistake? I've made many, all right? But I'm still here, and that's how it should be.
Any other member of the public wish to be heard? Come forward, state your name and address for the record. If you're with us via Zoom, use the raise your hand icon. Thank you, Neil. That being said, there is not a necessity for an executive session. The last action the government body will take is a motion for a German, please.
Motion.
Second.
Parati Brant, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing and seeing none, thank you.